Okay, I'd like to call to order the January 27th, 2025 Mountain Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take your role?
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Betcher.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Landis.
I'm here.
Commissioner Stenson.
Present.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Please let it be known that Commissioner Morgan is absent currently.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, approval of the December 9th, 2024, meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? I am not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, oh wow, vote for chair and vice chair.
Oh, I thought we already did that.
Who just did that?
I think that was the carryover, the end of the last year's term.
Yeah, so typically, we do chair and vice chair at the beginning of the year, but because we had Commissioner Isaac resign from the planning commission, then we had to fill that vacancy. But typically, on the first meeting of the planning commission, every year, we elect the chair and vice chair for that year.
Anyone want?
Do we need to do them as separate motions, or can they just be one big motion?
I was gonna say, is there a separate way? Typically, there's just nominate for the chair, and then nominate for the vice chair, and then you guys take a vote. That's typically how it goes.
Does anyone want to do it?
No. I think the people that are doing it are doing very well.
Seconded.
Yeah, so I'm gonna rephrase that as a motion. Motion to nominate Chair Batista as the chair of the planning commission.
Second.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone want to be vice chair?
Let me see. What did you just?
Does anyone want to be vice chair?
Want to nominate Commissioner Betcher to be vice chair of the planning commission?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Anyone? All right.
Housekeeping done.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, public comment. Is, do we have anybody in person that wishes to speak tonight?
There is no one currently here in the audience, nor has anyone signed up online.
All right, we can go on, move on to item number six, presentation on code compliance activities and rental program.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Laura Stevenson. This is not the right slide, and I'm the code compliance officer for the city. I'm here to present an update for code compliance, since it moved from the police department to community and economic development, so primarily covering May through December of last year. We'll cover code compliance statistics, rental business licenses, the steps taken from violation to correction, voluntary and nonvoluntary compliance, significant cases, and direction. I began in this role in May 2024, after six years as a maintenance worker in Public Works. As of May, there was a backlog of 97 open cases. From May through December, I opened 106 additional cases, closing 60 from the backlog and 43 of the new cases. So in total, I worked 203 cases and closed 103, 100 of those carried over into this year. This chart shows our code cases by type. Some cases involve multiple violations. Over half of the cases are primarily building code violations, most of which relate to missing permits. Building or missing permit cases often involve flipped houses, remodels, additions, demolitions, accessory structures, new roofs, garage or carport conversions, and missing rental business licenses. So yeah, this is a photo that started as a raccoon infestation with some building issues, and then it turned into an illegal demolition of the interior. It's bordered up currently. Nuisance violations are common and typically involve overgrown vegetation, vehicles and lawns, trash, collapsing structures, infestations, or attractive nuisances. There's obviously a lot of violations going on right here, but the most concerning one would be the oven in the yard, because potentially, a child could get in and become trapped. That would be considered an attractive nuisance. Zoning cases are less frequent, but often the most challenging to resolve. Examples include legal to illegal, nonconforming structures, setback issues, and tree or vegetation removal in critical areas. Cases involving unsafe conditions are the top priority. They often involve multiple violations across different areas of the code, including uninhabitable houses, vacant buildings, collapsed structures, tenants' sheds, and exposed hazards. Rental business licenses have been required since 2012. CED launched an inspection program to ensure life safety for rented properties. The city has encountered cases where tenants were living in illegal ADUs, garages, sheds, closets, or even tents. In some instances, tenants were instructed to use outdoor sanitation buckets. Many properties have lacked functional or updated smoke detectors, along with other critical fire safety issues. So we've amped this up recently. And... Almost all corrections are made voluntarily. This chart just kind of goes over what it looks like between violation and correction, whether it be voluntary, or if it needs to go all the way to appeal or lawsuit. You can see that there are three different things that can happen at the beginning of a violation, three different notices. If somebody signs the voluntary compliance agreement, then it bypasses the notice of violation rather than escalating to it. So a preenforcement notice, or PEN, is a letter sent to the responsible party for minor violations. It serves as a written warning typically for issues like overgrown vegetation or vehicles parked on lawns. A voluntary compliance agreement, or VCA, notifies the responsible party of existing violations and offers the opportunity to correct them without further escalation. This is usually the first written notice sent to residents. If the VCA is signed and returned, a notice of violation is not issued, because they're already agreeing to make the corrections. A notice of violation, or NOV, is issued for uncorrected violations after PEN or unsigned VCA deadlines have passed. It can also serve as the initial written notice for urgent or hazardous violations, and may be used for properties with related past cases. It outlines possible fees and remedies. All reasonable extension requests are granted. An NOV can be appealed to the hearing examiner within 14 days of service. I am not all-powerful. Then a final notice. This is a communication, the final one that comes from the city, outlining the next steps regarding fees, assessments, and abatements. It serves as the last opportunity to make corrections before further escalation, and it's sent out after a notice of violation or a signed VCA agreement deadline has elapsed. We've had three cases appealed to the hearing examiner, with rulings in the city's favor each time. Since May of last year, seven code cases have proceeded to litigation. One case involving an illegal structure was decided in the city's favor. The remaining six cases are still pending in Superior Court. Assessments are issued for daily fines past correction deadlines, recovery of city attorney fees, and Snohomish County recording fees where applicable. Four assessments were recently issued for open cases with pending fines. All four were appealed to the city manager's designee, Kristi Osborne. Three of four property owners made progress after receiving their assessments, but before their scheduled appeal. Abatements are considered a last resort, implemented only after all attempts at voluntary compliance have been exhausted. Abatements are typically carried out with a court order, though the city retains the option to abate as outlined in the code. This property had missed every opportunity to make voluntary corrections. Hillary Evans, our city attorney, took the case to court, and we were able to remove the building materials and junk. Picture to the left is what it looked like on the first visit, and the picture to the right is what it looked like when all the junk was removed. This property had been abated multiple times. On this occasion, I was informed that someone was living in a makeshift shelter in the backyard. We have an ongoing court order allowing access to the property for abating nuisance violations. I coordinated with the police department to investigate and found someone sleeping in the shelter. The left photo shows junk that had accumulated in the side yard, and the right shows the shelter. There was actually somebody in there when I took this photo. I didn't know that at the time. And then this is what it looked like after a junk removal company that the city hired came in and removed all of the junk from the side yard, and a lot of it from the backyard as well. There have been some significant cases that I'll highlight. This photo shows the Red Onion before it was damaged by fire in October 2012. It's remained vacant since then. The current owners purchased the property in 2017. In November 2023, code enforcement opened a case for nuisance violations and the neglected building. Last May, I sent a final notice stating that demolition and cleanup would satisfy the code case. In July, the city served the owners with a lawsuit, and in August, they were issued a demolition permit by CED. So this is a photo that I took in anticipation of demolition of the Red Onion. And then this photo is from a couple of weeks ago, and they still need to remove the foundation to satisfy the demolition permit, but it's come a long way. A few doors down, the old dental office was purchased by its current owners in 2018 and has remained vacant. In December 2023, code enforcement opened a case for nuisance violations and the neglected building. In June 2024, I spoke with the owner about the necessary corrections. He agreed to demolish the building and clean up the property. In August, they were issued a demolition permit by CED. So it's not a coincidence that this property in the Red Onion applied for demolition permits and tore the buildings down at the same time. They're owned by different LLCs, but the ownership overlaps quite a bit. So when the owner of the Red Onion property was discussing demolition with me, I'd mentioned that the dental office would likely need to be torn down as well, so hopefully that worked out for everyone, but he did them at the same time. This is what the building looked like in November, and this was from a few weeks ago. Again, they need to remove the foundation and the leftover cinder blocks. This case was opened in May of last year due to sewage flowing under the house and into the yard. We were informed about the issue by a tenant and a plumber who was later kicked out by the owner. The property was found in violation of multiple codes, including an illegal ADU, unpermitted work, lack of a rental business license, and uninhabitable conditions. The owner and property manager both appealed to the hearing examiner, who ruled in the city's favor. The case is now pending in Superior Court. The photo shows a sump pump pulling raw sewage from the side yard and the crawl space, and this orange hose leads over to a fence to the adjoining property, right at the fence line. These photos are from the same property. On the left side was the state of the electrical panel when I saw it. There were some free dangling wires in there as well. The drywall had rotted all around it. It was basically a large closet, and most of the drywall and insulation was on the floor in chunks. On the right side, this is where they did an illegal addition. You can see the seam from the original structure of the house into a makeshift laundry room. It was never sealed correctly. There's significant water damage in the walls, and then, of course, more somewhat exposed wiring. There's Kings 3. So in February 2023, our building official opened a code case due to missing permits. In June of last year, I sent a notice of violation, and then in September, a final notice. In December of last year, the owners of the property scheduled an appointment, asking for a settlement for the fees. We agreed to a lower figure, and more importantly, they signed a voluntary compliance agreement with set deadlines for each of their violations, the biggest one being the state of the building. So the building will either have to be brought to code or demolished no later than March 6th of this year. Momentum is growing to enhance the city's cleanliness, ensure property safety, and improve the community overall. As code compliance continues to progress, updates to the code will be necessary to align with the needs of the city and its residents. Code compliance with CED will present essential amendments moving forward. I'll take any questions.
From your perspective in seeing the violations versus the code, where do you think the most adjustments are needed in the code to improve the, you know, to achieve the direction on that last slide you were going for?
There are a few conflicting areas of the code that I think need a bit of nuance. There are some areas of the code that are so specific that it discludes things that were intended to be included. So definitely, it's hard to say without an example in mind. But another thing is, currently, we don't have caps on our fees. So potentially, not realistically, but potentially, somebody could go without mowing their lawn for so long that it could add up to hundreds of thousands of dollars. So what we will be presenting to council soon will be caps on types of code violations.
Yeah, I would just add, our thought is that we're going to cap the amount of cost, and we're going to structure it where if we have a life safety incident, you saw some of those pictures with the raw sewage. We had a family living in there with a small child in that condition. Then, life safety is going to be the high priority. That will have the largest fines. That will be most aggressive in those actions, down to nuisance, overgrown vegetation, right? So they're not apples and apples. It's kind of apples and oranges. And so put a fee structure in there and prioritize those more egregious situations that we need to clean up versus being able to work to try to accomplish corrective action. I think you can see Laura's done an amazing job. In just six months on the job, there used to be two code compliance folks. There is this person doing code compliance, and she's killing it. And so what that's allowed us to do, though, is to take a look at our code as we implement it and say, hey, we can do things that would be more conducive, because at the end of the day, it's about getting compliance with the code, right? And so the city has had a lot of house flipping that's happened, and so we have a lot of illegal building. So somebody's purchasing a home. People say, well, why is that important? Somebody's purchasing a home. Somebody's done improvements that aren't up to code, whether it's electrical or other things that impact the safety and condition of the house. So that's kind of how we're looking at these things, and also making sure that when we're taking somebody through the process, if we can't get voluntary compliance, that we have a really good process, as I say, to drive the bus around several times. Are you on the bus? Are we on the bus? If we're not on the bus, then in the past, we would have not had follow-through. The intent now is we have follow-through. So we're not going to forget, and we're not going to let these things linger for years, months, whatever. We are going to take corrective action, if that means we're going to the hearing examiner, if we're going to Superior Court, if we're placing liens on the property. We're basically changing the way we do business to make sure that we're ultimately getting compliance, and we're doing what we need to do, which is cleaning up these longstanding violations. Neighbors complaining, it affects safety, it affects property values, redevelopment of town centers. You can see, you know, those old dilapidated buildings, things that we need to be proactive about to improve the community. So that's what we're trying to do.
How does a violation happen?
How does a violation happen?
Is it complaint-based? Is it proactive? Are there mandatory reporters at the city?
Mandatory report? No, it's either, it could come in several ways, through a lot of methods, email, the reporting system, telephone, slipping a Post-it to me. But that's one way. Another way is just I observe it, or one of my colleagues observes it while they're out doing inspections. And that's usually what gets the ball rolling. Also, if somebody does a real estate listing that shows like, hey, this was supposed to be a shed, and it's a full suite, then they have to, they have to either like find a way to get it permitted, or change it back to a shed, or tear it down. It's actually a case that we're dealing with right now. So it could be through just some subtle online sleuthing, or driving around and observing. There's only so much, I can only really go, I could see what I could see from the street, and I can walk up to somebody's front door, and that's it. So if there's anything to see in the backyard unless I can see to their backyard from the street, which is rarely the case, then it would take somebody else reporting whatever's going on back there.
Okay, so it's a mix of people complaining, and then also like, if you hear about something, you will kind of show up, or it sounds like there's also some looking at real estate listings, or kind of investigating the internet. So it's an active role on your part as well?
Yes, it is, yeah.
How is your workload currently?
It's a lot, but not overwhelmingly so.
Okay.
Because the deadlines are typically, unless they're going to appeal or in court, or a life safety issue, the deadlines are somewhat fluid. So I wouldn't say that it's overwhelming, but it's a big list.
Okay, great. And then how far back do you look at the permitted construction? Like, this, you know, the city's 70 years old, and I'm afraid, you know, when the electrician came up to my house to replace the panel, it was a little scary, and I think we fixed it, but like, you know, there's just so much probable permitted work given the age of the city, like...
You're asking how far back I look to see if somebody got a permit for work that I can tell wasn't original?
Yeah, or if it like clearly violates the code, like the ceiling is too short, or it's like a wood foundation on nothing or something.
Right. I mean, it's case to case. I'm not going to find out you have a wood foundation. Like, that would, you'd have to advertise that for me to know about it. But that really is case to case, because some things, it's like, okay, this was built 30 years ago, it was built incorrectly, and now it's a life safety issue, or it's in danger of collapsing, or you're putting people living in there that shouldn't be living in there. Now it's a concern. If you have a shed that's been there 30 years, then, one, there may not have even been a requirement for a shed permit back then. But, two, this is not a big concern of mine, like where you store your lawnmower. So it kind of gets weighed out. Really, it's case to case on something like that.
Okay, and then the rental abatement program you mentioned, or the rental license program, is that like, you mentioned there's new follow-ups. Is that sort of, you know, there's a, does the city have a process of going and inspecting rental properties, especially after some of these violations have been reported?
Yeah. If we find out that there's a renter, we have a few ways of going about that. But if we find out that there's a renter and there's no rental business license, it's not the end of the world. Most people don't know that that is something that we require. We inform the owner or manager. Nine times out of 10, they go through the steps of getting a rental business license, having the place inspected. If they whoops, don't have the right smoke detectors, they're gonna have to replace them. Take a little bit longer. It's the ones who don't want to do it. I can speculate as their motive, whether it's not wanting to pay taxes, because you do have to register with the DOR, or you don't want somebody coming in and inspecting it, because you don't want them to see the living conditions. Whatever the reason, it still needs to be done. So it all shakes out the same at the end. We do have somebody appealing right now for getting a rental business license, so it can go all the way to Superior Court if it gets to that. But that's one out of 100.
And then, you know, in the case where it is like people living in sheds and whatnot, what happens to those people? I assume it's more on a landlord basis, but like, you know, does someone follow up with them? You know, do they somehow get reported into the legal system somehow? Like, what happens there?
So there's two cases that come to mind. One of them was handled when code compliance was still code enforcement with the police department. And in that case, they denied anyone was living in the shed. There was really no proof, other than the very unclean buckets that were happening. In that case, I followed up. They cleaned up everything they needed to clean up. So the yard was up to satisfaction. The neighbors made no further complaints about somebody living in the shed. That's really where it started. The other case I'm thinking of is... The other case I'm thinking of is the one that you saw with the sewage. There were people living in a greenhouse that had water sewer. This is where you see a problem coming in, illegal sewer tying in. Electricity, heat, you name it, they had it, a full kitchen, full bathroom. In that case, after the initial complaint came in, we started a case. The people who lived there after, it started in April. The people who were living there moved out in September. And by October, the landlord, the landlord found new tenants to move in. We found out about it and the people living, you know, the original people were living in the shed and the house or the, sorry, the greenhouse and the house. And the, the new people were told, just don't turn the lights on in the, in the ADU and nobody will know you're living back there. And yeah, it turned into a whole thing. Our building official red tagged the property, both structures as uninhabitable after finding that there were new tenants who had moved in and none of the violations had been corrected.
Okay, and like if they're, you know, I think one of the examples you shown had like a tent on the site, like, you know.
Police were involved, yeah. Yeah, the police were involved with it before I started here. And the police were there with me when we did the inspection where I was there. And then the police were there during the junk removal. They were there every step of the way and they have other things going on with that house.
Yeah, this is like one of those, like if it's a borderline, like, you know, this is, is it this or homelessness? Like I hope we have some follow up for that.
I just want to assure everybody, in a case where like we had the family with the small kid, our intent is not to put people out on the street and make them go live in their car. Like Laura said, this took a while to make sure that these people were in another location. So that's never the intent. We're also getting a list of social agencies together for exactly these things. In the case where we have people being potentially displaced or we have a situation where we have an elderly person that can't mow their yard. Can we find resources to help people? And so we're working on that right now as well, just to make sure that, hey, we realize all different things happen in life. People get sick, people get elderly, different things happen. That really, it's just about making sure primarily that we have safe places. In the case of the house and the greenhouse Laura was talking about, there's not proper sanitation. There's raw sewage, there's mold in the home, there's not proper heating. So, you know, it, it's a bad situation that somebody's living in. In the case of the folks living in the backyard, that property's been abated with the police, I believe, like three times. So this is just not a one off. This is, you know, so a lot of times that's what we find, frequent flyers. I think as Laura continues to do this job, just because we have success with something on a property doesn't mean that, you know, it's done and we, we wash our hands of it. Sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. So yeah, it's, you know, it's kind of a constant, it's one of those things. It's like traffic tickets, you know? There's always plenty to give out if, but I do think at the end of the day, we're always trying to be fair and always trying to judge the level of severity that, you know, something is and working on trying to get people help where they need it.
Right. Well, those two instances that we just got through talking about, they seem very severe. So I'm just wondering if the updates that we need to do to the code will make it easier to, I don't know, stop this kind of thing? Is, I mean, is it going on and on? We have the frequent flyers because our code is so lax or?
Well, I'll, I'll give my perspective and then Laura, you chime in. But I think in the case, the one case, this was a property that had issues for the last several years. I think what we needed to improve on as the city is our follow through. So I'm hoping when we were following through on some of these cases, red onions, an example, these other things where, you know, you better watch it, you better watch it. And, you know, and then we don't follow through. With the follow through and an opportunity to correct something, we are going to follow through. And I think, you know, that will be hopeful long term for us to make sure that these things are like now we're, we're serious. You know, we're, we're not going to forget and we're going to make sure that we follow through.
Yeah, I mean, along those lines, we've had, when, when I started here, I was, I was not given a whole lot of limitations on where we can go with this because we do need follow through. So I got a lot of support from CED. And I mean, I can't, I can't overstate like how important Hillary Evans has been to this whole thing. Like she's gung ho, like ready to go and work through all of these things. A lot of cities don't have that.
That's our city attorney, so.
It's, it's a good contact info to have. But as far as like the code changes, I think they're more indicative of the direction that we're going, which is just a faster pace. Like we don't want to wait six months to a year for somebody to mow their lawn. Like while there will be a cap, there will also be like faster turnaround on abatements. So is there a specific code that deals directly with life safety? I don't think so of the ones that we were discussing. But the overall, like it's, it's a living document. It's going to continue to need tweaking here and there.
Laura, do you complete all of the inspections for the rental housing program?
Absolutely not. That would be our building inspector, Greg Kersher. I'm not qualified to do that. I could tell if smoke alarms are working, but that's, that's the beginning and end of my list.
Just a little background on that. So council made it a priority and adopted code language in 2012. And HASCO would do the inspections for the cities, the city historically. And then HASCO came back to the city and said, hey, you know, we really don't want to do this anymore. We don't have the staffing to do it. So they stopped doing it and right about then was COVID. And so that program kind of languished. It wasn't really strong to begin with, but it kind of languished a little bit. And so we, we have made it a priority to continue that. There's five things in our code that you have to do. They're pretty minimal, you know, pretty basic stuff to make sure that these rental properties are safe. And that's really the intent. And then we're supposed to make sure that we're inspecting these, these properties every three years. So doing a rotating inspection. And usually the complaints are driven by the people that are renting these properties. So that's a lot of what we see. It's not really the, the city coming after a lot of people. A lot of times it's the neighbors, it's the people actually living in, in things. They're the ones that are reporting these violations. We do, you know, we're four square miles, so we have building inspectors, electrical inspectors. We have people out, we're small, we all talk every day. So we know pretty much, does that house have a permit or is something going on here? We see the big trash man out there, they're gutting the house, that type of thing. So, I mean, we just naturally can catch a lot of things and remind people, hey, you know, you need to be, you need to get a permit to do such and such or whatever. And the other stuff, a lot of it's just, you know, like Laura said, people calling us or contacting us and wanting us to investigate something.
Yeah, it actually happens a lot with nuisance violations where I'll send out a letter and I'll get a response like, oh, those are my tenants doing that. I'm like, okay, so they need a rental business license. Or I'll knock on a door and say, they need to get this under control. And they're like, oh, that's the owner's responsibility. I'm like, okay, they need a rental business license. Kind of snowballs from there. So little by little, it's catching on.
What's the kind of size of the program? Like how many rentals do we have registered?
Actually, Shannon, who runs our business license program, which are rental business license, Shannon would have an answer right now, how many are. We do it all, folks, except dog catching.
Forgive me, I have to go find the link for.
We'll, we'll try to get that answer to you tonight and if we can't, then we'll, we'll let you know. But we're definitely just restarted that program in earnest. So it'll take a while to get it all where we need to be.
And you said there's just like five things they're looking at?
Yeah, I believe it's like five items, yeah, that they, they need basically for, for safety. And I can't recall them off the top of my head, but they're in code. Fire alarms.
They need to be able to get out of their bedroom window.
Yeah.
They can't be living in a closet.
Ingress, ingress, that type of thing. It's, I mean, when I say it's basic, it's just kind of basic livability stuff. It's not anything big. And we're also not going to go on someplace and be like, you know, like Adam said, hey, you know, did you get a permit for, you know, that back in 74 or whatever? You know, I mean, that's not the intent that we're trying to do that to people either. You know, there's a realization that we have older housing stock and we have different things going on. It's primarily, things become an issue, hey, I want to do an addition. Well, then we need to do the addition to the building code now. Or, you know, I'm doing a whole new electrical panel. Then, you know, do you need an electrical permit? Things like that. But otherwise, yeah, we're not trying to go out and harass people or do anything like that. We're just trying to make sure that things are safe and things are tidy and cleaned up. So, and safe, I mean, safety's priority.
With respect to the follow through, is it more of a capacity issue in personnel? Or is it also that from a code perspective, the, the process has too, too many gaps in it? Where it's like you do something, maybe you have to wait three months. So it's just like this kind of loop where the code itself is kind of snowballing with delays?
You nailed it, it's both. That would be the big, well, right now, it's also just working through a backlog of cases that have been open for years. So in that case, it's, it's hard to hold somebody's feet to the fire when they haven't heard from code in two years. So try to see things fairly from that point. But if you're talking about like a pack, capacity issue where from start to end, like how long it takes to actually see something change? Part of that has to do with imposing deadlines. So like you saw for the different types of notices, you figure for a VCA and for an NOV, between the two of those and a final notice, they're going to have anywhere between like 60 to 75 days to really make something happen. The people who want to do something typically, they're going to get it done in 75 days. The people who don't want to do anything, they're not going to do it in 75 days, they're not going to do it in a year. So it's definitely prioritize stuff where like a house is for sale and the, the buyer is going to have to eat the violations without knowing it. So on that, we react very quickly. But if it's something like a truck's on a lawn and somebody doesn't want to cooperate, that could take a very long time and then you have to weigh out, are we going to court over this? We haven't yet, there's no plan to, but that, it does take some time. And then there, there was one issue with interpretation of the code that we were unclear about. So we had to kind of set some violations aside while we researched it and then that all turned out okay. Is there a specific thing you were thinking of?
Just i- if it is a capacity issue and the city has a limited budget, whereas, you know, we can't go hire a bunch of people. You know, I wonder if the code has enough economic penalties in there such that people kind of self-correct themselves? And if that's part of the direction that you're looking to take some of the code to have more teeth for the enforcement?
Oh, the fees have teeth. Like if you, if you go past your notice of violation deadline or your final notice deadline, say you go past one violation, 30 days, it's $3,000, it's a hundred dollars a day. If you have two violations, it's $9,000 because the second violation is $200. So we're just talking about two things, 30 days, $9,000, it has teeth. But it, then it comes to actually imposing that. That, that's where there's been a lot of hesitancy. And that's why there has to be a discussion about putting caps on the fees. Because if you hesitate for one person and not another, then this person should be getting $100,000 assessment. And this person's getting like a $10,000 assessment. So you have to kind of, you have to find some equity there. And it's, right now, it's not, it, it could be set up just a little bit better. That's why, that's something that we're proposing and nothing's been decided yet, but that's what we're looking at.
Is part of the hesitation, a concern over legal liability of unequal application of like fines? Because, you know, you could accrue it and then you could settle it later. But, you know, that starts getting a little bit difficult in terms of applying that consistently such that if anything were litigated, is that, I don't know if that's top of mind or anything, but it's what I was thinking.
It's definitely come to mind, but it hasn't shown up yet. Because the application of fines is also somewhat inconsistent and new.
I'm just trying to prod at the ways that you're looking from your perspective to change the code to help better enforce, yeah.
Right.
I think that's where we're trying to look at a tiered approach to say that the more egregious type of things we need to correct are going to have a larger fine. And the less egregious, we're going to have a smaller fine. The, the city hasn't followed through on fines. We are doing that now. We are actually leading property there. As you saw, I'm basically the person that someone can appeal a fine to. But yes, there always needs to be equity, right? Appearance of fairness. Something that always takes place as well is if somebody chooses to go to the hearing examiner process, they can do that with minimal dollars that costs the city to do that, which is fine. And we've implemented that and that's going along. But somebody just by their due process, then they could appeal to Superior Court. And that's where we don't really have control over those timelines, right? We, we don't tell the court what they're going to do, they tell us. So those can also kind of prolong action. But I would say historically, it's just been that we do the, the city has done the first part and then hasn't followed through. And that's really where we want to change the game and say, no, we're going to follow through. So we'll have to road test it. We have some recommendations coming forward and then we'll just kind of monitor it. You know, basically Laura's been, it's been over at CED department for about six months is all. So I'm sure we'll find other things that we feel like could be better as far as code language. And then those would come before you guys to weigh in on as well.
Yeah, and I, I imagine that getting taken to Superior Court is pretty expensive for, for the city, right? So is there any thought on, does the code need to be rewritten such that it's easier to obtain summary judgment on those types of things?
Oh, we already, we did receive summary judgment on one of the cases. That is the, I mean, that's the intent on our city attorney's behalf, but that's what she's going for. They also apply for summary judgment, right? Superior Court is never the goal, but.
Oh, I mean, avoiding it, it would be the goal for.
I mean, that's, there's so many steps that they can take to appeal on our end without going to Superior Court. So it's definitely something, we're not motivated to do it, but there are times where it just comes to an impasse and that's how it has to go. And it's good for the responsible party too, because they need to be able to have access to an appeal at that, at that level as much as we need to be able to get a court order for abatement or anything else. So it's, it's the most extreme thing that can happen, but here we are sitting at seven lawsuits, so.
And we're going to ask for attorney fees.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we're going to try to make sure that we're following the code precisely. That we have a good case, that people have an opportunity to question our judgment as far as a hearing examiner go. far as a hearing examiner go, goes for little cost. And if they elect to take it to Superior Court, then we're going to be aggressive in our case to Superior Court and we're going to ask for those fees to be paid by that person. So, you know, I think we're trying to be very thoughtful. You know, attorneys aren't cheap, city attorneys not cheap. So, you know, we want to make sure that we are forced into that position, but we're always going to try to get compliance way before we get to that point, every time.
Yeah, I'd also say that all of our cases, it's Superior Court are very serious. So it just has to go there sometimes.
I do have an answer now about how many rental business licenses we currently have, at least in terms of those who have applied for permits. Currently, it stands at 81. That does include those that have already been processed and those that are currently in process. We do have some who have applied for their business license, but not their permit quite yet. And I believe that's about less than 10, so let's say 90 total.
Back of the envelope map tells me that's way too low.
Oh, that's way too low.
It's really, really low.
Yeah, and it, and it is, it's way too low. Again, that's us just restarting that process. So I think if we looked at those numbers a year from now, they'll be substantially different than what they are right now.
At least 200.
Curious how that relates to the pet licenses that I think we're all supposed to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Exactly, that too.
Yeah, I think, I think the issue is there's just, most people don't know that they need it.
Just a curiosity question you probably don't have the answer to. The red onion in the next door? Why haven't they got rid of the foundation? Did they think they were done?
Oh, well, they just took it down. But no, I guess what I'd heard from our construction inspector is that he spoke with them and reminded them, this is part of the demolition permit, you must remove this slab. And they still have to actually cut back the utilities a little bit as well. And he said that the contractor had told them that he didn't take that into account when he did the bid. So we'll see, we'll see how long it takes. I mean, I think our, the goal is mostly met. But yeah, the foundation needs to come out before, they, they can't just leave it there and try to rebuild something else on top of it.
And that's a requirement we always have for a demolition permit, is that you have to take the fin, foundation out as well. So that's residential house coming out, commercial, it doesn't matter, you got to take the whole ball of wax out.
Are there many commercial violations or is it mostly residential?
It's mostly residential. I do get commercial complaints, not many. I would say that a lot of times if I'm working with something that's commercial, it's for a missing permit and those, those usually don't come from complaints. Those usually, we just find out about, one way or another, we find out about missing business license, an addition that was done, a roof that was done to a commercial space. But no, I would say almost all of them are residential. I'd hazard 95% are residential.
Okay, sounds like that's kind of it. Good presentation. I think I just want to add that every year when we talk about this, I also bring up the frustration that it can take so long and any, any effort to increase that timeline or decrease that timeline is much appreciated. The one question I have is the, we've been kind of talking about stuff happening on private property. Do you handle issues when an adjacent property owner ha, is encroaching into the right of way and doing stuff in, in, in the city right of way?
Yeah, yeah. If, so the right of way, it had, there are restrictions on what you can and cannot do in the right of way. If somebody has, usually it's overgrown vegetation, that's almost always what the right of way issue will be. If somebody's parking in the right of way, that goes to the police. They, they have from the street all the way up to the right of way as far as cars are concerned. And they have all the street up to the edge of the sidewalk, otherwise for any kind of anything. But when it comes to like somebody's, you know, from what looks like their edge of their property to the edge of the right of way, it's almost always vegetation. Or somebody put out a big, beautiful, giant iron lawn ornament in the right of way that can't be there. That did happen.
Yeah, we do, Chair Batista have some instances where people put things out curbside that I know that Public Works has helped clean up and other things. So I would say like Laura says, if it's vehicle, parking or enforcement, that stayed with the police department. So it kind of depends on what's going on out there in the right of way. Specifically, yeah.
I only ask, every city's different, how they, how they kind of dole out that responsibility. So it's, it's good to know.
Yeah, I would say as far as like illegal littering in the right of way, Public Works takes care of it because nobody's going to stake it out to see who it was or put in CCTV. But I, being in Public Works for six years, I have picked up a whole lot of discarded furniture and bags of trash from, that were dumped on the right of way.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Were you with Public Works with us, Mount Lake Terrace or?
Yeah, yeah. All divisions. Yeah, this is actually, this is a, from the water tower.
Regarding the stuff in the backyard, is it illegal if, for you to seize drones?
The, the legality of drones is hotly disputed in the code enforcement community. It's, it's funny because I went to a, what, convention? Yeah, training, thank you. I went to a training for code enforcement, code compliance. And I heard a presentation on drones and AI. And then immediately afterwards, one of the chairpeople walked up to the microphone and said, don't do any of that. Because state to state, it's different. Washington state is questionable. Right now, we're not doing it. Not really motivated to do it. Like if somebody is hiding something successfully in their backyard and no neighbors are complaining, this isn't like a top priority. If a neighbor complains, they can send me a photo and email to me, I get that too. And people will send them in through either the, the portal online where they can send in complaints or by email or in, some people leave them in the utility payment box and I'll get that, mail it in, drop it off anonymously with the front desk, as long as they don't put any of their contact information on it. There's, there are methods, but if no one is complaining and I can't see it, I don't pursue it. So no, I'm not, we're not doing anything with drones right now.
I think we have two drones in the city. The police department has them and uses it for enforcement purposes, but that's the only thing that they're being utilized for that I'm aware of.
Oh, no.
Oh, they take pictures?
Yeah, for the engineers, if they request.
Oh, yeah, for engineering, like if they, yeah, for photos or whatever, but for, for our purposes, no.
Okay, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
All right, moving on to item number seven, director's report.
All right. In case some of you aren't aware, Jonathan Morales, who was senior planner in our department, has left. He went to the city of Seattle and is working, I'm not sure what department, kind of their long range planning department, I guess, as you would say. And so we're in the process of hiring, excuse me, a senior planner position as we speak. We've started to get some applications in for that. So we'll leave that open just a little while longer and then do interviews for that position. The city is doing a Mount Lake Terrace Citizens Academy. I don't know if anybody's aware of that. It's going to be a yearly, a yearly thing. It is full. I heard that it filled up really quickly, which is cool. And each department will have a session which they will be part of. I believe ours is going to be March 5th for CED. And we were told to make it fun. So that's what we're going to aspire to. So for our week, it's finance. I think we could be funner than finance. I'm just going to say that right now. I think we got this in the bag, yeah. Yeah, unless they hand out checks, then you know, that's not cool. But anybody's welcome to attend any of these things, even if they're not a class member. And they're going to run from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And there'll be a total of six sessions. So I think they'll just run the gamut on getting an idea of what goes on behind, behind the scenes and what everybody kind of does as far as the city goes. So that should be pretty cool. There's also an open house that's coming up on February 12th for the Main Street Project Phase Two. The city has been working on federal funding for Main Street Phase Two, well, for a long time, let's just be honest. But there is a grant process, which is called the RAISE Grant through the federal government. And the city has a, this will be the third year in a row the city has applied for this funding to try to do the planned improvements on 56th Street. Many millions of dollars that are needed for that pro, project. Right of way acquisition, very little. It's usually like two, two and a half feet on most properties in some places. And then just the construction, which also includes upgrading the water and sewer and stormwater for that and then relocating some of the PUD utilities. And so most people are aware how expensive these public works projects are. They're kind of crazy expensive. So the, the state has given funding to the city on this. The city has monies set aside and then we're asking for federal funding as well. But there's an open house here in this room, February 12th from 6:00 to 8:00. I will be joining my counterparts from Public Works and Engineering and they'll be given a presentation and taking comment on, on that. Main Street Phase Two is really, is and has been part of the plan for the redevelopment of Town Center for several years. And so it's important part of what's been planned for, for years and years. So anyways, that's going on as well. We'll be looking forward to starting our conversation on zoning coming forth. You guys need to forward a work plan to city council and have a joint session with them coming up on the work that you're going to be working on for 2025. So we'll be scheduling that. And I would like to also throw in some training for everyone as we're working on the housing plan and the zoning as we're preparing materials for that. So that's going to be some of the things that are coming up in this early part of this year to make sure that we're keeping you guys busy and providing good information for you. So look forward to that. And then we'll be getting into the work for middle housing and the zoning and just making sure we have those pieces of zoning together as part of the comp plan. You'll also be updating the critical areas ordinance. So anything that involves work in wetland areas, wildlife habitat areas. Now, I'm going to be like, okay, what are the areas? Flood plains, hillsides, there's one more I'm forgetting right now. Anyways, so those regulations, we have a critical areas ordinance in place, but regulations change at the state level and we're required to comply with best available science. And so we'll be doing that and bringing that forward. That work will be starting shortly as well. But the timing of bringing it through the public process will be a little bit later just so we can keep the calendar open for the work that's due in June for the zoning. So, but you'll be getting a little bit of that along the way too. And then we're going to try to do some code amendments for process, state passed regulations for time limits for processing permits. It's gotten more restrictive on how much time we have to take a permit through the process. So we'll be doing code language updates for our procedures on that. And then like Laura said, we'll be coming at you to do some code amendments for code compliance as well and trying to make that clearer and strengthen those code sections. So that's a few little ditties that I can remember off the top of my head that we're going to recommend on the work program for this year as well. So any questions from me on anything else that's going on?
I know we're down a planner and our zoning change, our zoning, our zoning, our big zoning overhaul is due in June. How in trouble are we, given that this is now the end of January? Like, is there leeway to push anything back?
There's not leeway. I mean, we can be out of compliance. I don't really want to do that because for any type of grant funding, we want to remain in compliance. So it's going to be fast, it's going to be furious, but my intent is to not miss a deadline. So we, if we have to bring somebody in temporarily to just help with that, that's also an option that we can do. In fairness, Jonathan was going to be my partner in crime on that. And so we're, we're trying to rally a little bit, but my intention is that we're never out of compliance if we can help it. So if we have to kick out the jams, then let's do that and get it done and, and move forward. I think we're, we have a lot of the housing work done. We did a lot of the housing work. I mean, the background as far as a housing plan as part of the comp plan, I think we have really good information. We'll just need to add a little bit to that. We have the framework for zoning in place. We kind of went through that. So now it's going to be adding details of what that actually looks like. And so that's going to be that part of the code that we're going to have to kind of nail down. But it's not like we're starting with nothing. You guys have done some of that work actually, whether you realize it or not. You've done, you've laid some good groundwork that we can, that we can use. So I'm optimistic that we can get through it.
I know that some of the work was done in June and some of the work was done in December. Is that an opportunity to have like an interim thing if we're still trying to clean some stuff up for like our own purposes, but then for compliance purposes, we can?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why I've kind of tried to start going over our whole calendar for the year and plan things out accordingly. So kind of filling spaces in where we need to get the work done. And then when we need to bring it to you to oversee the work, you got to get the work done in order to do that. So we're working with Echo Northwest on that project. So they're in place, but you know, there's also the work part of it of putting some things together so we can give to you folks to say, hey, take a, take a look at this draft, what are we thinking? You know, and then we can massage it and get that in place. So there's work being done in the background, but yeah, we're, we're rallying the troops right now, so.
Yeah, in the interest of, in the interest of like just trying to. Yeah. In the interest of in the interest of like just trying to avoid a lot of like, you know, talking and rework and 10 hour meetings where we're watching the sun come up. I would be interested if you're able to like kind of give a little, you know, update of where you are on working with the consultant, because I know there's some back work that will have to happen before like, you know, we hear it. So like, you know, what you're looking at, if you found any deficiencies, like, you know,
Yeah, so there's some there's we're not there yet, but they're looking at that type of analysis right now. We're also looking at it from giving some a type of economic perspective as well of being able to give some examples and road testing where they think that we're going to be the most successful at. I fear that we're going to get some more legislation out of this legislative session. And I mean, that won't be due this year. But there is a cavalcade, I'll say that that's a big word, huh, cavalcade, of new legislation when it comes to housing. And how this all works out at the end is going to be interesting to see. But all we can do is go on what we know that has been set forth by the legislature. The problem always is is once law is made, then people always have to then determine what does it mean? So that's where where we get RCWs, which are the laws. But then we get the WAC codes, the revised codes of Washington, which say, oh, what they meant was this. You don't really have a lot of time. And people are still trying to figure out what they meant was this. And because of budget shortfalls with the state and because of staffing, etc., the this is what they meant stuff takes longer than the time that we have to have things adopted. So this is why we try to get the best help with really good folks with good background to help us in the we think this is what they meant. And then if we have to go back and potentially change that, or the legislature comes up with something new and our code doesn't meet it, then we'll we'll have to address it then. But we're going to do the best we can. I think we have good help. A lot of people have been following this legislation. So, you know, we'll just we'll just work through it and hopefully make the best fit that we can for the city. But like I said, I think we have a good foundation. I actually really do. I'm pretty I'm pretty optimistic of where we ended up with our land use map for the comp plan, actually. So we'll just take it from there and and get something adopted.
Did we just lose our chair?
Recording in progress.
Oh, good. They're back.
Okay.
Chair Batista, you there?
I'm here. What happened?
The gremlins, apparently. Has this happened before?
Unfortunately, this is the third time that this has particularly happened tonight. It appears that it is just randomly dropping and then reconnecting. Unfortunately, I cannot tell you more. This is just what Wes has told me.
Oh, okay. So there we go. And a solar flare or something like that, right? Any other questions that anybody has this evening for me?
All right, doesn't look like there's any. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number eight miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Vacations? Absences coming up?
I may request an excused absence for whatever the date of the the date of the meeting is on the second one in February, as I try to remember exactly what day that is. This is February
The 24th?
February 24. I preemptively request an excused absence for February 24. I may show up that there's a chance I may be out of town. Motion to excuse me. Can I can I can I excuse myself?
Try it out. Try it out.
No, you can't. Somebody else has to.
I make a motion to
Vice Chair Batista.
Commissioner Betcher from the February 24 planning commission meeting.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 We should say as long as he wasn't going somewhere sunny. I mean, there needs to be an asterisk on that.
Where are you going and rescind it?
I'll tell you afterwards.
All right, and hearing none, the motion carries. So Commissioner Betcher has an excused absence if he needs it on the 24th. Anyone else? All right, not hearing or hearing seeing anything. So we'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.